I call this meeting to order, please silence all your electronic devices so that we can conduct our business and stand for the invocation given by Councilperson Canal.
Please join me in the Lord's Prayer. Our Father who art in heaven, hallowed be thy name.
Thy kingdom come. Thy will be done on earth as it should be.
Let us say our daily prayer. And forgive us our trespasses. We have given those who trespass against us. We have signed the covenant of covenantation. But deliver us from evil.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the Republic for which we stand. One nation, united in heaven. Delivering justice for all.
Okay, we have a council seat we need to fill, so we're gonna move right to that at the very beginning. So I move a resolution appointing Jeremy Caras to Councilperson-at-Large position. Seconded by Mr. Byakostin. Anyone have any discussion or anything they'd like to say?
Mr. Caras?
Yes?
Could you please tell me why you wanted to get on?
Um, this, we don't have debate with the audience, so if you talk, we're having our meeting, they're witnessing it.
I'm asking you.
What, what's your question?
Why did he want to get on City Council?
Um, the Republican Party conducted a search. Several people applied to the committee. They all appeared at the committee meeting. They were asked numerous questions. They presented their, um, their background about where they came from and so on and so forth. Um, after that vetting process, the Republican Party chose Mr. Caras to sit on that empty seat.
Okay, now, tell me this, do you happen to know if he's gonna be by person at times where if I want something, he might say yes to it?
I would think that you can take that up with him. I don't speak for him, but, um, I know that the process was a valid, sound process, and I know that, um, the party feels that they chose the best person for that seat.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else? Call the roll, please.
Counsel President Jan Kowalski?
Yes?
Counselperson Bealy?
Yes.
Sisino?
Yes.
Canelli?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Briggs?
Yes.
Christian?
Yes.
Byakowski?
Yes.
Do you solemnly swear that you will support the Constitution of the United States, and the Constitution of the State of New York, and the city charter of the City of Batavia, and that you will faithfully discharge the duties of the office of Councilperson? Okay, um, you've all been given a copy of the August 2019 minutes. Anyone have any questions or concerns or additions or omissions in reference to those? So we're all consensus, those are accepted? The agenda, I guess. Item 107, 2019, the Redfield Pillars, Mr. Byakowski. 108, 2019, revolving loan grant award. Mr. Canelli. 109, 2019, the revolving loan grant award. The first one was, I believe, for excess rentals. This one is for value. Cedar Street rentals, I'm sorry, my mistake. Ms. Basini?
Actually, just that, I said so.
Yeah. The first one was, I said excess rentals. Uh, 110, 2019, the residency waiver. Communications?
Just one, this night, the bid requested to hold their annual wine walk on Saturday October 5th from 4:00 to 8:00 p.m. to be throughout the shops and businesses in downtown Batavia.
Any questions or concerns?
I, you know, who I stand on that, and I can agree to it, thank you.
Okay. Um, it's really not whether we agree on it, it's basically a notification, the way I look at it, how they filled out the form, unless it exceeds a certain amount, there's really no consolation on it. The next conference meeting will be held Monday, September 23rd, 7:00 p.m., City Hall, Council Wardroom, second floor, city center. And we have a couple of proclamations. First one is for the Little League. Okay, so I'll line up. Tied to the group, if I have a second. If you guys watch out, so I can keep my whole thing.
Okay, when you make a proclamation, it keeps saying whereas, 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 that means because. So every time you hear the word whereas, think of because. Whereas the City Council of the City of Batavia encourages the development and support of programs that promote education and athletic opportunities for the youth of the community. And whereas the City of Batavia congratulates the Batavia Little League nine and 10-year-old All-Star team for winning the District Three Finals against LaRoy, New York, advancing them to the Section One West Finals in July of 2019. And whereas traveling to Cuba, New York, to win the Section One West Finals against Pittsburgh, New York, captivating a double elimination tournament, advancing to the title of Section One Champions. And whereas the Batavia Little League nine and 10-year-old All-Star team earned the Section One Title to move on to the state championship. And whereas the District Three and Section One victories were a result of true adversity, resilience, great talent, and determination. Whereas the final outcome of the state finals against Massapequa, host Little League from Long Island, was not in Batavia's favor, however, Batavia walked away with two important titles and a lifetime experience. Whereas the City Council of Batavia wishes to recognize the countless hours of practice, dedication, and teamwork which brought the ultimate prize. Therefore, on behalf of the City Council, I take extreme pride in recognizing the 2019 Little League nine and 10-year-old All-Star team and the coaching staff for this outstanding achievement in athletics, and hereby make this proclamation to congratulate all of you on your accomplishments.
Are you on your exam?
Yep.
We're missing two, two kids today, Will Stephens and John Latiga, that's only two are missing.
Yep.
And our head coach was Sam Annor, and another assistant was Ben Google, so they're not able to be here. It was a great experience working with these kids and these coaches, and we'll see to have us next year. Thank you.
Thank you guys.
Okay, we also have another primary change for a recent retiree.
Okay, City Batavia proclamation, whereas Chuck Neelens retired from the City of Batavia on August 29th, 2019, after 30 years of service. And whereas he began his career on March 16th, 1989, serving the City of Batavia within the Department of Public Works. And whereas Chuck spent several years as a relief water plant operator, bringing a positive attitude to his position. And whereas working as a water plant operator, he repaired and maintained equipment and machinery for the water plant, wells, and water tanks. Chuck strived for excellence in many different scenarios. And whereas in 2009, Chuck was promoted to Chief Water Plant Operator, where he kept the plant running efficiently by his consistency in detailed reporting and accurate testing and thorough training. Chuck took pride in his job and made it a better place for all involved. And now, therefore, in a true spirit of appreciation for the many years Chuck Neelens has served as a City of Batavia employee, the City Council of the City of Batavia hereby makes this proclamation to sincerely thank him for his 30 years of dedicated service to our community and to wish him well in his retirement.
Thank you. And I appreciate everything you've always done for us.
Yes, yes, thank you, thank you.
I can just say one thing, you know, Charlie's been here for, for an awful long time, almost my whole career as well, but Chuck was the Chief Water Plant Operator and between the City of Batavia and the Town of Batavia, every single day he was providing the safe drinking water for about 20,000 people. So it's just an absolute critical position, it requires an incredible amount of responsibility, and we also have a couple of other retiree and current water plant operators as well, who just, they do an exemplary job, a very important job, and people don't give a thought about their water is safe when they drink it, and it's thanks to those guys, and if they do it right, you know, even, so, thank you so much, Chuck.
Does water taste different already?
The City Attorney's Report, which, under the impression they're today is the ordinance. At this point, I don't have anything else to report on, there's one. Okay? City Managers' Report?
Well, other than letting the cat back on George's birthday today, sorry about that couple of things I wanted to let you know, one of them, last week, um, due to, you know, to an incident that happened over there, um, Watson, that our new Assistant City Manager, Rachel Landman, out there, and Captain showing us around the area some of those trouble spots and hotspots, and have been talking about it, and we're looking at wanting to do something similar, letting you know as members of City Council, your various wards. So if you're definitely interested in that, we are definitely interested in letting you walk the spread, we're actually getting out of our cars, walking around, looking, taking a look, and, um, part of it, this is partly in relationship to some efforts we're doing with the Crime Task Force, trying to take a look at what, at the neighborhood level, what we're seeing, what we're needing to see. This helps honestly, all of us to be able to, to bring this information back to the task force, but also to, to see the various types of issues that are involved, and some of them are various. We wanted to let you know that, and we're also working on, is partly because of the, our Assistant City Manager's working on housing issues, but also because of the Crime Task Force, we're looking at some type of neighborhood focus group type of initiative to try to get started in various wards here in the city. So we'll be contacting you as things get developed, obviously looking for your input, and if you want to be included as, please let us know if you want to be included in all as part of the contacts and part of the solution we're trying to reveal. That's most of our announcement, other than we're looking forward to getting projects in the neighborhood.
Okay. Committee reports?
Very shortly. The scarecrows will be going up on Main Street soon, so be looking for them, all the different stores and departments put up a scarecrow that shows their department, and it's contested, it's a really sweet deal, so watch for our scarecrows to show up on Main Street.
Public comments? Okay, all speakers should have signed up in advance with the city clerk, each speaker will please use the podium in front. Please state your name and address before beginning your statement, you'll be limited to five minutes. Please address your comments to the chair. Council will not engage in debate with the speakers. On your first bell, it means you have 30 seconds left, so please wrap it up, because on the second bell, your time is over and I'm gonna have to cut you short. So you will, uh, please abide by that, it would be much appreciated.
Deborah Rosenbeck?
Good evening, I'm Deborah Rosenbeck, and I live at 13 Lewis Avenue in Batavia. The issue I wanted to speak about was the two resolutions on the revolving loan fund grant awards for this evening, and I've spoken about this before. I have no comment to make about the businesses, there are fine businesses in Batavia, but I just wanted to say that I am not supportive of giving grant dollars out of the revolving loan fund. Thank you.
James Thorment?
Hello, my name is James Thorment. I live at 6380 Freeman Road in Byron. I consider the Town of Batavia to be the up, not only of mental health, but the education system all around. I wrote a letter, and I'd like to address this letter to the chair. And, um, the background of this letter is a simple concept, um, because the city center is now owned by the City Hall, and we probably do have a lot of good plans for contractors to come in and rent the spaces for community service, even nonprofits. So, um, what I wanted to do was get a little freedom and latitude from the city to advertise my wish to form a planning committee of parents and their teenagers to discuss some strategies that would open up doors and provide additional risk resources to both the systems of education and mental health. Now, when I say such a statement, um, I have been involved for a lot of years, um, talking with many people, and I do have some success at forming a subcommittee of providers, not only for civilians and teenagers, but for veterans, in terms of mental well-being. This push, this bid or stimulus is a bid to bring parents to the table with their teenagers who have already discussed explorations of strategies for mental well-being and enrichment. So I have the time, I will read this entire letter. Thank you. Hello, hello, parents with teenagers. This planning committee of parents and teenager teams will provide and present a suite of action projects both the teenager and the parent would like to see and hear, being given community support. The planning committee respondents will meet at the Richmond Library every third Thursday of the month. For those who come at first and decide to remain as a planning committee member, our meetings will be downstairs on the left in the Wilbur Room, starting at 6:00. This group of parents and the teenager, son or daughter in high school, will be teams. We will discuss strategies for a set of projects including enrichment and mental well-being. Projects that when deemed to have both parental and teen appeal will be put together in a presentation to the mental health system and the school system. The committee members are welcome coming from families having no mental health history, as well as anyone who is or has been in treatment plans. Our goal is to have this committee represent parents and the teenager and organize on projects they would like to see given community support. I am a surviving parent of teenager suicide. In our case, the suicide death of our 14-year-old daughter led to the suicide death of our 23-year-old daughter. There are good strategies which will end with being a help to other families and provide additional resources for the mental health and well-being of persons in treatment plans. Resources, therefore, for the mental health providers. Enrichment projects can community service and character building. It was my aim to form the projects which are fully developed and are ready for being applied. This committee will bring them to the administrators as, as a package. The students will be the developers, facilitators, and promoters for community involved and be engaged for supports they can bring and may need help as well. So they will be asking that, with what and why, they can use these projects in the first place. I am looking for a small business, for the small business owners to display this sign for two weeks, then change the location to a different small business. I have tried to get help from the franchises and corporations with no one willing or able to do this. I would, I believe that point old parents with their kids should have a say in perhaps any alternative approach in education and mental health. An approach that recognizes them as leaders and developers to facilitate projects which allow the domain to be, to be defined. To do things they like and have inclusion on those projects they are interested in doing. To find for, to reach for and find a purpose. That purpose can be finding ways to help themselves and their peers too. You are welcome to come to any meeting at the library to find out what the planning committee, committee puts time and energy behind. When ready, the committee will do their presentation and the invitations will go out to the program and treatment plan directors in the education and mental health systems. The web mail address, myteam@kidsnet.us is hip of complaint. You do not need to register to attend, only come if you are interested. Bring along your team partner too. I began reaching for this purpose after our family tragedy. That's all.
Gregory Halleck?
Hello, my name is Gregory Halleck, I live at Main Davis Avenue, Batavia. So I am here to talk about this weekend, uh, Saturday between 6:00 and 8:00 p.m. GoArt is doing a farm-to-table event, and I'm hoping all of you will purchase some tickets by going to www.gearboard.org and buying some tickets. I wanted to paint a picture of the menu really fast. Um, there are four courses, and there are multiple, and they're not options, there are multiple items for each course, so you get to try every one. So for appetizers, we have pickled summer squash, eggplant cake, and tomato prosciutto. For salads following that, we have cucumber, corn, and pepper salad, and then a roasted broccoli salad with toasted almonds and fresh herbs. Then for our entrees, we have, oh my gosh, you can help me, pasta bolognese. Bolognese, sorry. I'm obviously not the culinary person, but. Pasta bolognese with rich ground wheat tomato sauce, lemon herb roasted chicken, green and yellow beans as a side dish, and then cauliflower steaks over whipped cauliflower. So I'm vegetarian, or we can, can have that, well, vegetarian can have that. Then for desserts, we have peach and blueberry hand pies, maple cinnamon roasted apples with whipped mass, or bolognese. And zucchini cake with cream cheese frosting. So all this is farm-to-table, so everything's coming from local farms that we have donated, purchased, and are putting together to make this, um, event happen. And then we have Leonard Oaks from, um, Lindenville, Norley's coming, and we also have Eli Fish in donating the beer and wine, so they'll be pairing with every item. Um, so that's, that's what I'm saying from here is, Madina is, I think this is their fourth year that they did it, and this year they sold out in 10 minutes, and sold 220 tickets for $125. We're selling them for $105, and it's been more than 10 minutes. So I mean, I mean, Batavia and our surrounding area show up Madina, so I'm asking anybody in this room, if you are interested in food, which I'm sure everybody is, I know I am, to come this weekend, it's going to be on Bank Street. You guys approved for us to shut down Bank Street, so it's going to be on the street. It is scheduled to rain for that morning, but we all know that changes 20 minutes beforehand. So if it rains, we will be inside our beautiful building, but if it doesn't rain, we're gonna be on the streets. Um, we've got all the permits to make it happen, it's going to be a fabulous meal, it is being prepared by GVE, Bosse's, they're doing Chef Tracy Bergio, who is incredible, you know, if you haven't had any, you've had to cater by her, and she, but her food is amazing, and all of the Bosse students are working on it together, and then we're making a donation towards their culinary club. They're going to New York City this year to learn some stuff and take some classes out there. So I encourage anybody, if you have time this weekend, or if you just want to purchase a ticket and give it away, you can do that too. Thank you very much.
That's all.
Any comments, public comments?
General for GoArt, what was that website?
What was our website?
What was the website again?
Uh, goart.org.
Thank you.
For purchasing tickets.
Or you can call 343-9313.
Anyone else?
Or Patty can give you tickets.
Anyone else? As far as Mr. Thompson?
Yes, you are.
Thorment, I'm sorry. Um, yeah, I mean, if you come up with something, and you come up with a project and you want to bring it in front of council, and, what do you mean, individual, one at a time, you know, case by case type thing, you're more than welcome to come up and, you know, present it to us and see if we can maybe help you in any way.
May I make a comment?
A very good one, a very good one.
As, as I wrote and designed some projects, with the first, uh, concern was appeal to parents and teenagers. I found that there are special cases that can be reapplied and expanded on for different types of situations. So I will be very happy to talk to you about the mainstream projects and use illustrations regarding special cases, and that's very helpful to get this, get the understanding of the project and what it's supposed to do. Thank you.
Anyone else? Any unfinished business? Okay, resolution 107, 2019, Mr. Byakostin.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move a resolution to honor an agreement with Catenary Construction Corporation for construction services for the repair of Redfield Pillars.
Seconded? Any questions or concerns?
When this was first discussed, there was apparently some of the pillars on private property, is that true?
So the excess agreements with some of the property owners for the pillars that may pitch private property. The DPD is working now with the property owners on that.
Okay, are we gonna have to take care of the bushes and the grass on that private property?
No, the city's not gonna have an ongoing obligation in connection with that, it's simply acts as a floor repair of the pillars.
Now, meaning repair, are you just, some of the pillars are gonna be repaired, or is all the pillars gonna be repaired?
Matt, did you want to?
I defer to Matt on that, since he's the one that worked on the contract.
Matt, may I remind us with the project details?
The project entails roofing about approximately thirty percent of the existing stone and almost all of the mortar work, so whatever the stone will be replaced, some of it is just the wrong type of stone, it has been replaced over the years in different repairs, so it's hopefully more of a consistent, it was original, but that number's approximately thirty percent. The light fixtures on top of the pillars will be reinstalled, however, the conduits will be placed behind the stone, so they'll be invisible, you're out of sight if you will, and as far as the access agreement, is a temporary access agreement that expires upon completion of the project, as far as the private property side of the two solitary model lists on each side.
Thank you.
And it came in?
Underbid, right.
Yes, you did, and the company that is the bidder, the little bidder, he had the architect for a firm where he was using his work with them before, and has had positive results in similar type work.
I'm glad it came, you know, underbid, that's for sure, but doesn't mean I'm gonna go for it, but anyways, simply because of the fact that a lot of constituents, I think it's wrong that we're taking taxpayers' money and putting it into this. I want people to realize that there are seventy-eight houses on Redfield Parkway. Each of those houses receive two tickets per six sessions out of the year for concert tickets. That equals one thousand five hundred and sixty dollars. Three years, it's four thousand six hundred and eighty dollars. Seventy-eight houses also receive twenty dollars in returns, that again equals four thousand six hundred, and out of the three years is twenty-eight thousand dollars. I can't imagine why we will be using taxpayers' money for this. Thank you.
Just to jump on that, where does the money come from where they receive those tickets? Does the city buy that money? I don't know.
Pardon me?
Where does that money come from that pays for those tickets?
It comes from a private organization.
So Batavia Downs pays them?
I, that's...
So I'm just trying to get this straight, so what you're saying is, because someone has an income, we should punish them and make them pay for a city project?
No, I'm not saying that, I'm saying my constituents do not want to pay for these pillars, okay?
I understand.
They don't think it's right.
I understand it, but it's city property and we have to maintain it, that's just my thought, and you're telling me that because they get some, wait a minute, you're telling me because they get income from a private entity, that somehow outweighs that, and because they got extra money to burn, they should, we should make them pay that money to do something else? That's their money, that's what they want?
That's absolutely ridiculous, I'm saying a lot of my constituents do not want to pay for it.
I understand.
Most of them constituents are yours too.
I understand.
Okay, so that's it.
And mine are also people that want it.
As long as I, you know, brought it up, I feel good about it.
It's fine, I'm just confused as to how so much private income is somehow irrelevant.
And just don't be confused.
Okay, Mr. President, I think the tickets are given to the residents of Redfield in appreciation for the fact that they are inconvenienced with the concerts, the bright lights, the horse races, you know, sometimes people do look better because they have to get up at four in the morning to go to work, and they have to listen to black groups coming around the fort turn, and stuff like that. So I think that's a good, a common exchange for, we know what you're conveniencing, but getting back to the resolution, which is the point of the meeting here, Cadenary Construction is a, kind of a respected masonry company out of Rochester, I feel confident they will do a good job. One of their local projects they did was Farmer's Restaurant in Leroy, which was a burned-out hulk of a building, if anyone's been there and through it, it's just absolutely incredible that they saved that building, so I feel confident that we're being under, way under budget, substantial amount under budget, that we will get a fine job and hopefully not have to go through this, our lifetime gap.
Correct, and it's unfortunate, but it's city property, we own it, we're responsible for it, we could let it fall apart and be a hazard, or we can repair it, and I think it's wise that we take ownership of it and maintain our property, our buildings, our sidewalks, our property is our responsibility, so this is from, and I understand there's people that don't like the idea of it, but it's still, we own it, we gotta take care of it. Anyone else? Can you call the row please?
Councilperson Byakowski?
Yes.
Jankowski?
Yes.
Veely?
Yes.
Pacino?
Yes.
Canelli?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Bragg?
Yes.
Christian?
No.
Karaz?
Yes.
Byakowski?
Yes.
Jankowski?
Yes.
Veely?
Yes.
Pacino?
Yes.
Resolution one oh nine, twenty nineteen, Ms. Pacino, please.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move a resolution authorizing the Batavia revolving loan fund grant award and authorizing execution of participation agreement to battle.
Second in line, Ms. McGinnis? Any questions or concerns? Call the row please.
Councilperson Pacino?
Yes.
Canelli?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Bragg?
Yes.
Christian?
Yes.
Karaz?
Yes.
Byakowski?
Yes.
Jankowski?
Yes.
Veely?
Yes.
Okay, Resolution one ten, twenty nineteen, the residency requirement, Mr. Veely?
Thank you, Councilperson President. I move a resolution to waive residency targets.
Second, Mrs. Bragg? Any questions or concerns? Call the row please.
Councilperson Veely?
Yes.
Pacino?
Yes.
Canelli?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Bragg?
Yes.
Christian?
Yes.
Karaz?
Yes.
Byakowski?
Yes.
Jankowski?
Yes.
Byakowski?
Yes.
Jankowski?
Yes. Ms. Pacino?
Yes. Whereas Article seven, section one oh five one eight of the Public Officer's Law permits the legislative body of municipality to enter into executive session to discuss proposed acquisitions, sale, or lease of real property, or the proposed acquisition of securities or sale or exchange of securities, although as a public law, but only when publicity would substantially affect the value of the lot. Whereas Article seven, one oh five one D of the Public Officer's Law permits the legislative body of municipality to enter into executive session to discuss proposed pending or current litigation. Whereas Article seven, one oh six, section one oh five one cap of the Public Officer's Law permits the legislative body of municipality to enter into executive session to discuss the medical, financial, credit, or employment history of a particular person or corporation, or matters leading to the appointment, employment, promotion, demotion, discipline, suspension, dismissal, or removal of a particular person or corporation, now therefore being resolved by the Council of the City of Batavia, that upon approval of this motion, the City Council is hereby enter into executive session.
Second in line, Ms. Veely? Call the row please.
Councilperson Pacino?
Yes.
Canelli?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Bragg?
Yes.
Christian?
Yes.
Karaz?
Yes.
Byakowski?
Yes.
Jankowski?
Yes.
Veely?
Yes.
Okay, the now running session.
Can I just say one thing, Mr. President?
Mr. President?
Can I just say one thing? Thank you, thank you very much. My sister says to all council people, thank you very much.
You're very welcome.
You're welcome. Thank you.